All right, we are a little past 6:30, so I will call tonight's special meeting to order. And Patrick, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Husknecht.
Here.
Mayor Vane.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have before you the agenda for our special meeting. I will look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Valento and a second from Councilmember Erickson. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and our agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is discussion of the 2024 levy and budget presentation. We will first hear a presentation from staff. We will provide an opportunity for council to ask any initial questions they may have or any clarifying questions they may have based on staff's presentation. We will then open up our public hearing, which is an opportunity for anybody that is in attendance that would like to address council, that is your opportunity to do so. And then we will close that public hearing once everybody has had an opportunity to speak, and we'll bring it back to council. There's a, will be another opportunity for council to ask questions. If council wants to make any statements, they're certainly welcome to do so, and then we'll move into a motion. That's kind of our order of procedure this evening. With that, I will turn it over to Patrick and Kevin.
Yeah, no, I don't have any words. I'd just like to thank the council for their hard work. This has probably been the most difficult, number of meetings that we've ever had, since I've been here at least for budget. We have a lot of items that we still have to go through in the coming years, a lot of hard decisions, but I think this is a good first step, even though it may be somewhat unpopular. I think it's what we have to do, and we're putting ourselves on the road to a sustainable financial plan that can be altered as the years go by when, once you've...
Excuse me, Mayor. Mr. Patrick, would you have the microphone just a little bit closer? You've got important words we want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
Good reminder to all of us. Speaking of the mic tonight.
Just, like I said, the tenure plan that you will hopefully adopt is a very important guidelines to the future. It doesn't lock you in stone for the coming years, but it is a guidepost. And I look forward to that adoption and the coming years where the tax rate goes to single digits instead of double digits, which is the long-term plan for a sustainable budget. With that, I will turn it over to Kevin, the Finance Director, to go over the presentation for the 2024 budget year and levy.
Perfect.
Thank you, Patrick. Mayor, City Council, tonight is our annual Truth in Taxation meeting. So we'll be going over the budget that was provided in your packet at a high level. This is summarized information that's in there. Once I'm done going through his presentation, any questions you may have to clarify, you can sure answer those. And then after that, we'll open up the public hearing for any citizens that would like to speak on that tax levy. So the meeting requirements. Part of the annual Truth in Taxation meeting is to provide a budget summary for the upcoming year, so in this year 2024. It also will go over what the proposed levy will be, the proposed levy for 2024. And like I said previously, it provides the public with an additional opportunity to provide input on that tax levy if they so choose. So this slide summarizes the, all the funds of the city excluding the enterprise funds, which are the water and sewer funds. Just a couple of highlights to point out here, the top line, the general fund. You can see that it is a balanced budget, meaning revenues and expenditures equal. So we're calling for no increase in fund balance. The other major funds in here, park dedication, capital improvement, capital equipment, and building maintenance is following that capital plan, tenure plan, that is up for approval as part of this meeting as well. The other big portion of these, of this budget is our debt service funds, which are our bottom four funds. Those are all based on the debt that the city has scheduled or planning to issue and the required principal and interest payments. This next slide summarizes the water and sewer fund. Again, this is following the 10-year capital plan that has been presented to City Council. You can see the ending net position for the water and sewer fund is large. That is mostly consists of all the capital investments that the city has in its water and sewer infrastructure that makes up that, that position. This slide gives council and the citizens of Forest Lake a breakdown of where revenues come from in the city, excluding any tax increment financing and also the enterprise funds. As you can see from the graph, the majority of the revenue does come from the different levies that the city does have, with the next highest coming from any intergovernmental revenue that the city receives, which for the city of Forest Lake is mostly is MSA dollars related to street improvements. Here's, the next slide is a graph of the expenditures by function. Again, it excludes the TIF and enterprise funds. You can see the majority of the expenditures, about 46% is from the general fund. This is covering the operations of the city to maintain core functions. The other significant portions in here are the capital improvement funds, which funds our streets and road improvements, and also capital equipment and any park-related capital as well. This next slide breaks down the general fund expenditures, where they go. You can see the majority of the expenditures fall under the police budget. This is rather common in municipalities just due to the costs of having a police force on staff to provide that important public safety feature for the city. This slide summarizes where the tax levy will be, is being proposed in 2024 as it compares to 2023. The top one, the general fund, which is operational, is calling for an increase of just under 10%. You can see the other funds there, the capital equipment, building maintenance, capital improvement plan, and parks and trails, that's following the capital tenure plan that is being proposed to City Council, and those levies are following that plan that has been presented to City Council previously. The debt service fund, debt service, those are debt service payments that are required to be paid back, along with any new proposed issuances that the city has planned for 2024 to meet those principal and interest payments. So overall, you can see that the proposed tax levy increase from 2023 to 2024 is 13.91%. This slide shows the impact on what that 13.91% increase in the levy, how that will impact different values of residential homes in the city of Forest Lake. Important to note, this is only the city of Forest Lake's portion of the tax bill. The top line, the $372,000, that is a median home value for a residential home in the city of Forest Lake. So you can see, for example, for a house value of $372,000, it would be an annual increase of about $114 for that property. So where does this tax levy go? A large portion goes to the general fund, about six, just under 69%. This is most of the city's labor cost, material supplies to operate the city. About 6% goes to capital equipment. This is a fund that the city uses to purchase squad cars, fire engines, public works, equipment such as no piles or any trucks that are needed for the city operations. Parks and trails is just under 1%. This is to enhance the parks and trail systems for the city. About 6% goes to capital improvement. This is for paving, street maintenance, repair, and projects to have the streets in proper working order for the city. About 16.7% goes to debt service. These are debt issuance that the city has issued and the requirement to make payments back to, to repay that debt for principal and interest. Then economic development accounts for about 1%. That's used to fund economic development initiatives. And then just a small percentage goes to the building maintenance fund, which the city has proposed to start planning for the future. The city does own buildings, and we need to have a plan to have funds available to maintain city-owned buildings. This slide shows the levy percent increase since 2015. On average, if you average out these years, it's about 6.4% increase over, since 2015. So pretty modest increase. When you average that out, there is that jump from 13 to 13.91 this year, as this council is aware of and planning to help maintain streets, parks, building maintenance funds, and things of that nature. This slide shows the history of the tax rate. You can see, starting about in 2018 and 2019, the city started to get down to a 40% tax rate. And maintain that level to about, till 2023, when the values skyrocketed, our tax rate percentage decreased about 35 and a half. With the proposed 13.91% increase in the tax levy, we are estimating a tax rate would be 37.569%. So still under kind of that 40% where the city has been hovering on for the past few years. One piece of information I would like to share, that is not in your packet, that I was able to compile today. This is a list of cities that the city of Forest Lake likes to compare themselves to. So when looking at what these cities are proposing or have already passed for their 2024 tax levy, you can see Forest Lake there is at 13.91, but there are other cities in our peer group that are over 10%, double digits, with some of them still being 6% or 7%. I took, I took a look at what the percent increase has been for these cities over the past two years, not just for what is for '24, but also for 2023. And you can see in the far right column, there are cities that are, that are outpacing the percent increase for the city of Forest Lake. For example, White Bear Lake over the past two years, it's almost increased their tax levy 40%. Prior Lake and Ramsey, 23%, 30% respectively. And a lot of those are cities in that 17, 18% range as far as where that tax levy percentage has increased. Just wanted to put this together, just to, we always like to know what other cities are doing, and what they're doing with their tax levy. So I thought it was a good piece of information, this to share with council and residents of the city of Forest Lake as well. So with that, that wraps up my presentation. If council has any questions for myself, I'd be happy to answer those right now.
Thank you, Kevin. Council, any questions to, for Kevin or any member of staff before we open up the public hearing portion?
Just, just one. Can you remind us, the roughly, almost 10% increase to the general fund, how much of that was accounted for just simply by inflation, you know, insurance premiums, technology increases, staff contracts, that sort of thing?
With current staff increases, with the union contracts and inflationary numbers that we can't control, it was just under 7%.
Any other questions before we open up? Go ahead.
Kevin, could you go back to the water and sewer fund, and you, you touched on that large, those two large numbers on the very right-hand column? Can you explain that one more time?
Yeah, so, and when you look at the enterprise funds, there's, what we, there, the fund balances refer to net position for the enterprise funds. And there's different categories in that position, so fund balance. So there's an investment that the city has made in its water and sewer infrastructure that makes up that net position. That accounts for about 70% or so of that. So, for example, if you put in a million-dollar water main, that goes to your net position as an investment in capital assets. It's not there for the city to spend. It's an investment in that capital asset. And then when that water main is depreciated over 20 years, that number gets adjusted accordingly. So that number does look high, but it's, it's really that investment that the city has made that doesn't account, that also includes unrestricted portion in that fund, which is there for the operations.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, can you go back to where there's the debt, dollars that are owed for debt? Specifically, what account or where is the, the $9 million from, for the YMCA building?
YMCA building would be funded out of the debt service EDA refunding fund. So it would be, let me give you a... So it would be the second to the bottom fund, the debt service EDA refunding, where there's a revenue of $1.4 million in there.
When, when is that, when does the Y, when does that come off? Do you know what year approximately?
I can find that. I was gonna say, it's 33 or 30, 34.
It's about $650,000 a year. The total thing was $90,000.
2033 is the last tax levy year for that. So 2034 would be the last payment that would need to be made for principal and interest.
And what is that costing the city a year? What is that?
What's that?
What's that portion of that? What is that?
Just YMCA.
Yeah, just the Y. Do, do you know what that?
So what you're seeing for 2024 of that 1.4 million, that's 105% of the next year's payment, which is required per city statute to be levied for. So that whole levy is covering next, the following year's principal and interest payments.
Wasn't that refunding? Wasn't that, didn't that refunding include the city center refinance and the YMCA? Aren't those bundled together?
I think so. We did refund the city center construction. That's when we saved over $1 million.
I said refund, I meant refinance. When we refinanced, it was the city center and the YMCA debt together? Is that in that same line? No?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the YMCA was in there or not. I'd have to go back and see that. I think, if, based on those numbers, it probably was. Yeah, we did that in 2019, I believe. It's when we saved a million dollars in annual payments or over the life of the bonds when we refinanced that, so. I'd have to look, I'm not sure YMCA. I know the YMCA is around $600,000.
I think it's around $650,000 for the next 10 years.
It was the portion for the YMCA.
And we've been paying on it for 10 years, I believe.
Paying on it however long the YMCA, when it was issued, so.
So the original debt was issued in 2013, and it was refunded in 2019 for $15.7 million. That 1.4 million is strictly for the refunding of the YMCA debt. There was a utility portion in there, that is getting paid out of the utility funds, and the street reconstruction portion is set up in a, in a different debt service fund.
And that also, I'm sure includes the, this building as well.
This building.
Because it was a 34, 32, $34 million refunding.
Any other questions before we open up for public hearing? Not hearing any council, after, after we hear from public hearing, we'll open up for another round of either questions or any comments that council may want to make. So with that, let's open up the public hearing portion of our Truth in Taxation meeting. Do we have a sign-in sheet this evening? We will go in order of signup sheet. If you haven't signed in, that's fine. We will keep the public hearing open as long as anybody would like to speak. When you address council, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then we're happy to hear your thoughts. And forgive my pronunciation of names. Let's start with Michael Anderson. Good evening.
Evening. First off, how long do I have?
I mean, we are here as...
Okay. Michael Anderson, 7570231st Street North, Forest Lake, 55025. So, a year ago, you'll remember, I, I was very adamant about an $80,000 increase in the value of my home. Reason I bring that up is because I'm a combat veteran with 100% disability. So the first $300,000 of my home is tax-free. I said, "You guys are gonna tax, increase and increase and increase until I cannot afford my home and have to move out because of the taxes are too high and have to live in my cabin or off the land." And you said, "Oh, no, that's not gonna happen." And you were sitting there on, not on our side, not on the other resident's side, you were on the side of the county. And I sat there and pleaded with you and said, "This, this can't increase that much." You said, "It won't, it won't keep happening. It might, one year it might go down." Well, okay, I'm looking at it right now. It went up $70,000 last year. This year it went up $60,000. So my tax increase went up, it said 323% from the county, but they're not very good at math, because it's 423%. And I'm sitting there looking at it, I mean, I can afford now, but I'm looking down the road, pretty soon I'm gonna be living in a million-dollar house, and it's gonna be falling apart. Come to my home. Tell me that's a, it's a, it's a $380,000 house. USAA, my bank, and then, and Zillow and all the other places, say 370, 360, that average. I, yes, I, I see out here that this is not my time to go, I should go to tax court and all that, but I don't, I want to be heard, because last year, you were on their side. And this increased because you were on their side. We need representation for us, for people in this city. I drive, I ride, I ride a motorcycle. I ride my motorcycle, run all the time. I don't know how many times in this town I have hit gravel, and not like in side streets, not like, not where the dirt road meets up with, with, with North Shore. I'm talking about like in the middle of Broadway and where Walmart is, 10th Street, all the roundabouts. They're, they're not cleaned at all. My, my streets right now are skating rinks. Literally, I can press my brakes for 30 feet and I'll watch my truck slide all the way. I thought I was gonna nail my neighbor's mailbox again. Again, I said again, because I did it last year too, because the trucks were now. Is it that hard to get those streets? You, you, you've got, and my house is probably one of the lower ones in the area. And, and how, how much are people? I just want to know. Where, where are my taxes going? And I was up there on the meeting, the EDM or the BSM or whatever meeting it's called, and you guys were talking about, "What are we gonna bring into the town? What are we gonna bring into town? How will we fix what we have in this town and take care of the people that are already here? Please? I'm fourth generation in Forest Lake. My kids are fifth generation, and I want to keep them that way." You, you were asking about how people, how are we gonna keep people to stay? Treat us right. Stand up for us. Stand up for us, not the county. And it made me cry when I had to check other, when, when, or do the write-in, for, because no one ran against you. Somebody, please. Sam, come on. Leaf, Blake, someone. Stand up. And when, when someone says, "We want 15%, we want 16%," and you guys, "I thank you for saying, 'No, we're not gonna do that much.'" Please, keep this a small town. Reason people are moving up here is because people are getting pulled out of cars and shot. I watched it. I've watched it in Minneapolis-St. Paul. I've watched people get shot. That's the only place I've been shot in, in America, is in Minneapolis. I don't want that here.
Thank you for being here. Ed Eigner.
My name is Ed Eigner. I'm at 221 Everton Avenue North, Forest Lake, 55025. Boy, that's a tough act to follow, because he's right. This community, I've been here 25 years now, and I tried everything. In fact, I sat on that council. I want this community to grow, but I don't want them to continue to waste money. We just talked about $9 million debt on a YMCA that could have put that building there just for giving in the land. They would have been more than happy to pay the rest. We're indebted for what? You just said 10 more years? Like, 2034? I mean, this building, it's half-empty. You can walk in any of the offices up here, air, the most modern equipment of the time, electronics, wiring, all obsolete right now. Never used. Terrible spending of money, just terrible. No fiduciary kind of responsibility whatsoever. And that's not bad enough. It comes from, like he just said, the taxpayer. I live on a private road. I have city sewer. I have police protection, fire protection, no streetlights, no city water, no snow plowing, no grading. I get nothing for my taxes, and you increased the city portion on my tax $600 this year. If you think I got $600 more benefit, I don't think so. It's ridiculous. It's gotta end somewhere. It's gotta be some sense, and I know how tough it is to sit up there. I was there. There has to be some common sensing. These are nice to have? We can't afford this, especially when you haven't brought any commercial activity. I think there's a Ford dealership going in. That's it. In 15 years? Nothing! Walmart was the last big acquisition for Forest Lake tax, where you collect some tax revenue. You don't get anything. You know as well as I do, all these houses that are going in, they're dead loss to the city. You don't gain money from property tax on a house because it costs you more in services. You've got the fourth highest police paid police department in the state! Do we have the fourth highest crime in the state? I don't think so. It's gotta stop! But I'm gonna end it, because I'm moving next year, and you'll be happy to see me go, I'm sure. But I'm getting the hell out of Minnesota, because this can't keep on. Everybody's gonna leave, especially the ones that are retired and on a fixed income, because where's the next $1,200 in taxes supposed to come from every year, year after year after year? It's nuts. Said my piece, and I do appreciate that you lowered your projection of the levy, but nowhere near low enough. Nowhere near low enough. It should be riding at, inflation's running 6, if you were taking a high end, 9%. How can you justify a levy at 13 and 14%? You can't, and you guys are gonna vote for it. You should be ashamed.
Thank you for being here. Bob Phillips.
Bob Phillips, 21950 Jason Avenue North. The reason I came here, I got my levy, and it went up 23%, and it really equates to the $600 that Ed had. I was, I came here and I just wanted to find out what you're gonna do with the extra $600 this year, if you can tell me that. Is it something I can see or feel or whatever? But it, it is pretty high to go up 23% in one year, so I'm just asking, where is it? It looks like the larger areas, is the general fund or the capital improvement? So is there something I can see for that $600 that my house is paying?
Do we have a copy of tonight's packet printed? There is? Okay. So to help answer your question, there is a copy of the packet that is provided over on the side table if you wanted to look at, look at the packet, correct? And there's also a copy online. So we don't typically... So we don't typically, and this is an opportunity for feedback, not typically able to engage in kind of back and forth discussion. But I do want you to know there is a copy of the packet that does have those details that kind of outline by fund, the percentage of, the percent increase. That kind of illustrates kind of your questions on what are the increases?
If I look at it?
Yes, so you're wel- yeah, you're welcome to take a look at the packet.
Would it take one? Do you have any?
So there's a, there's a copy of it you can look at, yes?
Okay. Okay. Uh, this is the first time I've been to the council lady.
Welcome, I'm glad you're here.
The last, the last one I was at is the old, the old place, so it looks good.
Thank you, I'm glad you're here. Russ Peterson.
I brought a fan. Um, my name is Russell Peterson. I live at fifty-one-oh-seven, two-hundred-and-seventeenth Street North in Forest Lake. I did attend last April's meeting to complain about the market value of our house. And it was decreased twenty-eight thousand dollars. So now it's, uh, let's see, six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. It's fifty-four years old. We lived there forty-two years old. And I did replace a couple of light bulbs with LEDs. And I don't think that accounts for the six hundred, seems to be an awfully common number here this evening. But that's what our tax increase is for our home. And as Ed mentioned, we two are on a fixed income. And I have read the challenges that you guys are facing as a council. And, uh, certain things can't be put off and must be addressed. But it's a difficult pill for us to swallow. And there isn't a lot we can do about it. So besides express our frustration and concern to you. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for being here. Jerry Grunner.
Good evening. Um, in case I start to cough here, I apologize, I'm just getting over some bronchitis. So don't think I got COVID or something else, okay? Uh, my name is Jerry Grunner. Address is ninety-four, forty-four Jewel Lane North, Forest Lake. And I've been a resident of Forest Lake now for about forty years. There's two things I wanna talk about tonight. The first one is the twenty-twenty-four tax levy. And secondly is to have a little discussion about, um, the ten-year projected tax levy. So first of all, in regards to the twenty-twenty-four tax levy, first of all, um, thank you for all the hard work you've done in working on this. I've, I watch all the videos that are out online of all your meetings and workshops. And I know you spent a lot of hours with it. And to come from twenty-two percent initially down to thirteen point nine-one percent is, is difficult. And I applaud you for getting down to where we are right now. That being said, I can tell you I honestly support the thirteen point nine-one percent, uh, tax levy for twenty-twenty-four. Because I understand the, the needs that have been kicked down the road over the last several years. And from that standpoint, um, we have to do something. Um, and doing something in smaller increments to me makes more sense than doing major increments as we move forward. Um, the one question I have also is, I think on page twenty-three of the agenda, there is a list of the Forest Lake personnel. And it appears that, and maybe this can be brought up after, uh, we get done with the open forum here. Is that you're adding three individuals, um, to the budget for twenty-twenty-four. One in administration, one in, uh, community development, I think, and one in, uh, surface water management. My question is, are all three of those individuals in the budget under the tax levy, including the surface water management individual? Or is the surface water management individual part of that fund which is paid for by the fees that are collected under surface water management? So maybe you can answer that for individuals, uh, after I get done. And then secondly is, um, is there going to be, um, maybe you can also explain to people here, what are the two positions that you're intending to hire for twenty-twenty-four? Um, I think that's important for people to understand that. Personally, I think the code enforcement individual is extremely important, needs to be addressed in the city. There are, uh, numerous properties that, um, need some enforcement. And, uh, that's been a difficult task. We all drive around and see these properties. It affects people wanting to move here. So it's something that I think needs to be addressed, along with, um, I suspect, an HR person. So maybe you can answer that afterwards. In regards to the, uh, ten-year, um, tax levy, that's on page one-oh-one of your agenda or the last page of the agenda. Um, first of all, I wanna, I wanna thank you for having a ten-year plan. I think it's very prudent business to have a ten-year plan, to know where we're going, whether it be a city or a business or whatever else. Um, that being said, it needs to be a reasonable plan, okay? And when I looked at that ten-year tax levy projection, I became a little concerned. Um, and I'll tell you why. You know, in twenty-twenty-four, we're talking a thirteen point one, thirteen point nine-one percent increase. In twenty-twenty-five, we're talking a thirteen point seven-one percent increase. And in twenty-twenty-six, a fifteen point seven-four percent increase. Now, again, those don't sound like big numbers, but when you add up the dollars in twenty-twenty-six, and this is projected, I understand this, this is not locked in. I understand that this is only for planning purposes. But understand, it starts to set expectations. That's what's important here. You, if you, particularly because I think one of the things on the agenda here is that there's a resolution to approve this ten-year tax levy. So expectations are starting to be established once you approve it at, at these rates. But in twenty-twenty-six, the tax levy is nineteen million, six hundred and forty-four thousand. In twenty-twenty-three, it is thirteen million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That is a six million, five hundred and eighteen thousand dollar difference. That equates, and I was an heir previously, that equates to a forty-nine point six percent increase in the tax levy in three years. Let me say it again, forty-nine point six percent increase in three years. I don't know how you feel about that, but that feels very unreasonable. And I think most people would say, can't be done. So I would ask relative to this resolution tonight on this ten-year plan and the tax levy, that you do not approve this ten-year tax levy and that you go back and revisit these numbers. And maybe instead of three years at forty-nine percent, the three years is at thirty percent. And you have to take another year, two years to get caught up with the things that have been kicked down the road. But forty-nine point six percent over a three-year period is not sustainable, it's unreasonable. With that, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Was, Mr. Grunner was the last person to sign up on the list to speak tonight. However, happy to open it up to anybody else that would like to speak. And if you would like to speak, just please come to the podium if you could. And Mr. Roveng, I've also, I just got it handed the second sheet, so we'll pick you up next.
My name is Mick Corbett. And I live at twenty-one-three-eighteen Iverson Avenue North, Forest Lake. And I'm here to ask you to spend some money. You charge three dollars every month on the electric bill. I don't have one goddamn light. I go down Highway ninety-seven, there are about seven turnoffs that are on major developments, that have major housing. And there is not one light on those turnoffs. I stopped at the city three and a half years ago and asked for a light. I didn't get a telephone call, nothing. Why can't we have, you're collecting three dollars off everybody's lightbo- light bill. But the only place you have lights is in the old original city, every other block. But not in the old township, no streetlights. So spend some of the three dollar money, please. My second request is, I want the police department, instead of sitting at the roundabout watching the cars go around, to go through the parking lots and get, kick all the people out of the handicap spots. You know, it says two hundred dollars fine. You go up there and there are people sitting there waiting for their wife to come out the store because it's the closest spot. Okay? And that doesn't cost anything because you already got the police. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Roveng.
Are you Mr. Roveng?
Sir, we'll pick you up next.
I've sent a couple of emails out. My name is Dave Roveng and I live at two-one-three-eight-zero Fondant. And I appreciate the fact that you guys have reduced it to some, some extent. And I talked to Sam, uh, in one of the meetings you guys had upstairs. I, I just as a reminder, I wanna echo you with this young man here with the beard has. I've lived here for forty years. And I think I want to reiterate that, uh, us retired folks that are fixed income, we get a three point two percent income increase next year on our social security. That's us. And
Sir, it's
All right, well, there you go, same for you. And all of a sudden, we're looking at not, not only what you guys, even increasing here at thirteen point nine, it's fourteen percent basically. But we're, who in the city really has made that much more in the last year? Has gotten an increase in their wages by even ten percent, which is kind of the inflation rate? And we're going at thirteen point nine? You know, come on. And the bottom line is, I don't know if you guys appreciate the fact that this is our money. This is our money. It's not the city's money. It's our money that you guys are, are basically acquiring from us to spend. And I understand there's needs, but some of the stuff that I even talked to Sam about, why is a, I'll be, I'll, I'll just, I talked to Sam about this. Why is a pickleball court a need rather than a want? Those are the kinds of things that just flabregates, flabregates people like myself that are looking at, you know, this kind of basic reduction in our, in our retirement income because of things that you guys are doing here in the city. And I've, I'll admit, and the school board, and I'll be talking to them next about this whole deal too. And the county is raising, but not nearly, what, between you and the, and the school board, it's eighty-five percent of our taxes are gonna be, I, I, it's not an eighty-five percent increase, but that's eighty-five percent of my taxes. That's the reason why I am concentrating on what you guys are doing and what the, and, and what the school board is doing. And I think, again, to reiterate, I know you're taking some hits here tonight, but I think they're justified. I think they're justified. I'm glad they're reduced down, what, eight, eight and a half or eight percent or something? But man, I'm telling you, to have people like us that are on this fixed income, it's hard. It's hard. And everything is going up. And when you guys are going up even higher than, you know, the ten percent or whatever the inflation rate is, that makes it even harder. Makes it even harder. Thank you.
You're up. Yeah.
Excuse me, I, I haven't been able to follow any of those. My hearing's really bad. And I'm way overdue for a hearing aid, so that's my fault. But, um, I've been in the paper that there's provisions for a hu- hiring a, a code enforcement officer. And, um, I was here up in the front of the city council several years ago, talking about a problem that we had over there. We're, and, uh, well, nothing's happened in those several years. We've got trash houses in Forest Lake. And, uh, we've got one on our road on, uh, on, uh, Hawkstra Avenue. There's a new one on, uh, Highway ninety-seven just past Harold. That one's really bad. There's one on, uh, on, uh, North Shore Drive. There's another one on Eleventh over here. Probably a lot more than people can point out. And, uh, nothing is being done about it. And, uh, if it takes a, uh, code enforcement officer to finally make some, a movement on it, I'd really like to support it. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? We'll hold it open for a moment. Anyone else that would like to speak this evening? All right. Let's bring conversation back to council. And we'll, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, let's maybe first start with any further follow-up questions we might have. Um, I did hear a question in the audience tonight specific around asking clarification around the staff positions that are included in tonight's proposed levy. Patrick or Kevin, could you just walk through those positions? I know we've, we've started with a longer list than what we've landed on. And can you just walk through what's proposed in, on tonight's resolution?
What's left in the budget is a, as mentioned a few times already, is a code enforcement officer. That is to address some of the issues we have with people's yards and the number of many complaints that we get on a regular basis. If, if, and I've said this in the past, a code enforcement officer will be very busy without being, just by the phone calls we get. It won't be a go out there and search for them. It'll be responding to all the calls we get, neighbors like some of the people in the audience that see the yards next to them or they drive by them. We have plenty of yards that, that, um, and properties that need to be remediated. So that's, that was the main, one of the main focuses this year in the budget. Uh, the second, uh, is for a human resources generalist, basically, to, uh, help operate the city's, uh, human resource, uh, function. We, the city's never had a human resources officer or, or generalist. Part of the reasoning is that we are getting bigger, we're a bigger community. But also, uh, every year we get more and more, uh, responsibility or more and more rules and regulations coming down from the state and the federal government that we have to interpret and administrate. Uh, and not to complain about the federal government or the state, but there's more coming. And some of those have to be, we have to interpret those and, and go forward with those. So it's a really important position at this point, uh, in time for the city and the way we're growing, the size of the city. The third position is, um, a, a stormwater, uh, maintenance person who, uh, will be in public works. Uh, we have, and I forget the number of, uh, stormwater ponds and, and structures that we have. But we have a lot of those and they take more and more time every year to inspect and to clean and to make sure that they're operating the way they should be. Uh, that is coming out of, uh, most of it's coming out of the stormwater. It's gonna be split between that and the sewer fund a little bit, a small percentage into the sewer fund. But most of its work will, will be focused on the stormwater ponding and the stormwater system to make sure that that continues to operate correctly. So those are the three positions that have remained in the budget this year.
Thank you, Patrick. Open up to, any other questions that anyone may have? Any questions? Does anyone have comments, statements? I'm happy to entertain any number of topics right now.
Well, the only comment I'd like to make is this has been the most difficult, uh, budget season I've ever worked on, for sure. And one thing that was common, uh, knowledge with every member of this committee or council or whatever you wanna call it, is we need to do something about roads. And there's just no other way that we can do something with roads and, and the other things that need, you know, there's some park stuff in there too, but the lion's share of it is roads, for sure. And, uh, I think last spring gave a pretty good indication of what, what that was all about. At no time did I ever hear anybody on this council saying, there's no way that we can go beyond, you know, that we can get, uh, that there's no way that we can go higher than eight percent or something like that. And it's, and it's really, the reality is, eight percent of this budget is what, exactly what takes us to break us even. I'm a taxpayer here too, and it's gonna hurt me just as much as the next person. My kids, one of my kids live here and he's gonna be ta- paying taxes. We pay taxes on other buildings here. And so it's not, it's, none of this comes lightly. And, um, if this thing has been kicked down the road, you've heard that statement many times, that when we do this, then stuff just keeps getting more and more and more expensive all the, and we keep losing ground on it. And so it's not very tasteful, but we've gotta do something that get us back where we can get some, uh, things done in the city. And parks are part of it, but the, by far the lion's share is, uh, roads, so.
Other comments, questions? Happy to, go ahead.
So I'm challenged, as, as some of you know, on, on a, on these positions, the additional headcount right now in, in the, uh, economic environment we're in. I've, uh, was early on board with the, uh, code enforcement person. Um, but HR came on to, uh, came up to us where was an but HR came on to, came up to us where it was an issue that we need to address. So that, I was, I was fine with one additional headcount. That was at first code enforcement, but really the HR person, we've had some internal problems that need to be addressed. And the organization, as Patrick Casey was saying, is getting larger and there are a lot of mandates coming down that, that just takes, when you have 100-plus employees, it takes a lot to manage that. But on the code enforcement, I just, I, I think that there, you know, we did just set a new policy, new ordinance to maintain or handle these different complaints. And I agree with, with the gentleman, both of them that spoke about the need of that. But with, with the building apartment slowing down, not having as many applications and inspections, I think there's some, I really do think there's some bandwidth there to be able to handle some of that stuff. Go after the top five or 10, see how that works and make, and see that this new policy that is addressing these is actually working in our favor so that we can clean up some of these. I think that's an opportunity to at least give us another year before we add that person on and obviously lower the levy. Also, as far as the stormwater management person, you know, the one thing that people, it's, get confused about, a tax and a fee. Fees are taxes. We're all being taxed on fees, on taxes, and it's the same thing. So if we're gonna, you know, we have the water, some people might realize that we're projecting the water and sewer fund to go up 6% each. Fee be going up 6% each year. There again, you go to the three-year plan, now you're at 18% on both of those funds. And so just because we're not going to completely fund it, that position out of the levy, I say we pause on that right now as well, based on the economic times right now. And I just don't think that we need to add three additional people. I'm comfortable with one because I think it's needed, but the other two, I think we can make work with the current staff and start, stair-step into some of these things and see how this new ordinance works with the code enforcement.
Thank you, Councilmember Roberts. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to make?
I think as Sam put it in a great way, that it's been pretty difficult this year, as everyone knows, to go and talk about this levy and hear everyone's feedback and comments, whether it's in person or via phone call or an email. And as previously mentioned, the previous levy increases were in 2022, 7.26%, and then in 2023, 6.9%. So having been on the city council for two budget seasons now, and this is my third, after those two being lower, we heard from so many people complaining about the services and the services not being adequate enough. And so we are trying to have the, talk through a balancing act with the community members, with ourselves. And as Sam mentioned too, we're also paying these taxes. We know people who are, you know, are in this community more than just ourselves. And it's our neighbors, our family, our friends, ourselves. And so the balancing act of just making sure we are listening to those folks, those people, making sure our services are adequate for everyone, bettering those services, especially as the town is growing as well, but also making sure that we're not gouging our community. Because we live here too, we want those services, we want to meet those needs, but also making sure it's at a reasonable point. And we've been through so many discussions, so many workshops, and been back and forth, and it's been a compromise. And I think that's a huge, I want to emphasize that it's a continuous compromise. We want to make sure that, I mean, for example, we've increased parks. And I will, I've said it almost every single meeting, that we have increased parks. And honestly, I would love to see increased more, but again, it's that balancing act. And knowing that the Parks Board last year, they all quit because we were not, the previous two years at 7.26% and 6.9%, we were not funding our parks. We have not added a park in this town for over 10 years. And knowing that five people quit from the board, that's shocking. That's scary and that's sad. And so I think where we have had those conversations, again, about wants and needs, and it's a stepping stone. We're getting there slowly but surely. And as everyone knows, our roads are terrible. And so like Sam said, a huge brunt of this, this levy increase is for our roads. And so it's just, it's sitting here and making sure that whatever we decide to do, it's for the best interest of the community as a whole.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
Yeah, I mean, we hear a lot of the comments that have been shared tonight. Certainly, you know, taking on this sort of a levy increase is significant. And I want everybody to know that we've heard you, you know, we've read all the emails, we've taken the phone calls. And it does affect every one of us. I mean, not only our own personal residences, but our neighbors, our, you know, family that, you know, could live in town. I think there's more things to look at than just a levy increase number that's taken into consideration. You know, certainly the tax rate, you know, recognizing that we're still well below 40%. Where surrounding communities have, you know, dropped their tax levy or have lower tax levies, what is their tax rate? And I would argue that they're probably quite a bit higher than Forest Lake's. Forest Lake has a long and seemingly proud history of keeping the tax levy super low, but at the expense of roads, parks, and the things that have been mentioned tonight. And it's just, that's not the only measure of success in a city. If you want to have a community that is attractive for more businesses and their employees to come into town so that we can enjoy that broader tax base and enjoy greater services that isn't all on the burden of the 20,000 or so that live here today. So I, you know, I think we absolutely need to have a tax levy that is greater than what most people would like to see. That's why, but I have also worked to bring it, you know, as a part of this team, to bring it down from 22.5%. And even as, you know, we look at this upcoming resolution on the 10-year plan, I mean, in reality, what that is, is a 10-year, for all intents and purposes, a wish list. Like, if you want to see the city become what you think it could be, it's going to take X, Y, and Z. It included a 22.5% tax levy for this year, which obviously this body was not comfortable with. And so even if that 10-year plan is approved as it sits today, it does not lock us in any more than last year's approval of a 22.5% for this year locked us in. I do agree with Blake, you know, there's been a number of calls that, you know, 13, 14% still feels high. Is now the time to add additional headcount? I'm not willing to budge on roads. I think, you know, this entire body has been resolute in that, that it is time to pay for roads. It is time to get after that. In these upcoming years where we see that levy increases, because we're also going to be taking on debt to fund roads, which is a very smart way to pay for roads. It's not all in the backs of the people that live here today, but on the, you know, be a part of the wallet of people that come here in the future. But holding the line on headcount, I'm not opposed to that, you know, to certainly, you know, be mindful of where folks are at today. I guess one other point about a mayor is, you know, we've heard and we've seen emails from a lot of people that are on fixed incomes. And if those people are in a situation where they qualify for property tax rebates, I hope they are proactively doing that and getting it filed by August because it is an opportunity to get significant dollars back into your pocket. It's a part of our tax code.
Very good, very good point. Thank you for bringing that up. I'm not usually a fan of prepared statements, but as I was starting to put together what I wanted to say tonight, I needed to do a prepared statement. So I apologize in advance. I also want to acknowledge everything that's been said tonight, both from you, our participants, residents that are here to speak to us, and also from my fellow councilmembers. The words in this statement are going to be massively unpopular. However, after five years in this seat, I can only speak on what I know to be true. I'm going to submit from the top that the core issue tonight isn't the high percentage increase that you're seeing and that's being proposed, but rather decades of under taxation catching up to us. Historically, financial decisions have been made year to year and project to project without a long-range look at what that means for our city as a whole. Additionally, votes have been divided and time and care have not been taken to gather consensus. We have now a 10-year plan that guards against nearsighted tendencies and forces us to take a citywide planning approach. Once you've looked at our 10-year plan, you can't unsee it. In the last few years, we've had great success in securing alternate sources of funding. In the last five years, and for the first time in city history, we've submitted requests to the state for their bonding bill. And thanks to the leadership of Senator Housley and Representatives Detmer, Anderson, and Hill, we've secured project fundings for lift stations, stormwater management, Eureka Avenue, and our Veterans Memorial. Those are all dollars directly into your pockets. Additionally, staff continues to secure grant funds for various projects, and they continue to be successful. While all of this is terrific and appreciated, at some point, Forest Lake needs to pay for Forest Lake. The unpopular reality and hard-to-swallow truth is that property levy dollars have not historically been used for street and park projects. It's why we're in this position today. When residents say they pay enough for services, I don't think they know that historically, those services have not included street and park projects. Tonight, we can point to two key funding policies that are outdated and causing gridlock in our 10-year plan, and I have to explain further. Historically, street maintenance has been funded exclusively from annual state aid funds and franchise taxes on utilities. That $3 that was mentioned tonight, that's where that goes. We've started funding streets with levy dollars in the past few years as council has put together a bonding package for street maintenance, and we've started to chip away at street funding. We now know that annual general fund contributions to keep street fund maintenance is needed to keep that fund in the black. This decision cannot wait as we have three significant projects on the horizon that require substantial use of our local share dollars. Washington County's projects on Everton Avenue and 11th Avenue, and Mindot's reconstruction of 97 from 61 to the freeway. The second area of outdated funding policies causing gridlock in our 10-year plan is on park development and maintenance. Beyond mowing and simple routine maintenance like trash collection, parks have generally been funded solely from fees collected on new development. This policy has resulted in the city's preference for dollars over Parkland dedication and has resulted in recent neighborhoods being built without a neighborhood park. Our athletic field complex, Fenway Field, was funded, oddly enough, by a loan from the Sewer and Water Fund, a decision that created stress on the Sewer and Water Fund and hamstrung new park development for over a decade. There has never been a levy-funded, long-term maintenance plan for Fenway or any of our parks. New housing development means we need to continue to decide on park dedication, space, or fees. Without assistance from the levy, without some additional funding tonight, upcoming park projects in Belts and Fenway cannot be funded if we are also going to continue to have neighborhood parks. I'm not sure anyone is comfortable with this plan. We've become an exporter of recreation. Our residents frequently travel out of the city to enjoy Hugo's new park facilities, dog parks in nearby towns, or athletic fields in neighboring communities. We heard testimony from FLAW this fall on the number of tournaments hosted outside of Forest Lake, simply because we do not have a lighted field. We all recognize that park improvements will have significant impacts on the lives of our residents as well as our business community. It has perhaps one of the near-term drivers of economic development that we can make as a city. Like streets, we now know that we need annual general fund contributions if we're going to do anything near term with Belts and Fenway and to keep our park fund in the black. So now what? We asked staff to give us the number of what it would take to stop kicking the can down the road, and the model came back with an astounding 20-plus% levy increase for 2024. As with any plan, we now have two variables in front of us, time and money. As a council, we've been asked to do the impossible, to fundamentally change our funding policy for both streets and parks while advancing near-term projects and educating our residents and gauging a level of support. We can't outpace you. We all understand that. So how do we do the impossible? The only path that I know is that we lean on each other. I started this year's budget conversations recognizing the tough road ahead and stating that I would defer to consensus. As a city, we need to stop making major decisions on split votes. There are no good guys here. There are no bad guys here. We're just five guys literally sitting at the kitchen table trying to figure this mess out. At every budget conversation, I've reiterated my commitment to consensus. Consensus doesn't happen often in our world anymore, however, I truly believe it is the only way we do the tough work and move forward. We've gone from 20-plus% to the current number in front of us, just shy of 14%. In the long run, is it enough? Our project plans tell us frankly, no, it is not enough. In the short term, is it too high? Most of you tell us, no, yes, it's too high. Our inboxes tell us, yes, it's too high. Based on our budget workshop last week and all of the work that has gone into hours of meeting that have preceded this conversation, I think it's the number that has the greatest shot at consensus, and I encourage us to move forward together. And with that, I would, is there any other further discussion? Not hearing any other discussion. And I don't have in front of me, but I will get it. I will find it. With that, I would move that council approve Resolution 121123Z01, setting the 2024 general levy and adopting the 2024 budgets. And Patrick, could we get a roll call vote this evening?
Need a second.
Oh, motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Patrick. Could we have a roll call vote?
Is there some opportunity for discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, so no, as far as the code enforcement, there's no, or any of these positions, there's no, no more conversation on that?
Here's my, here's my thought on code enforcement in particular. I have lost strong feelings on the water position. The code enforcement position has been on, on the table for at least three years, and we haven't funded it. And funding it next year isn't going to be any easier either. And that's where I am on so many of these numbers tonight. It's where I am on streets. It's where I am on parks. Next year isn't easier. And we, and I've been sitting in this seat for five, in this seat for five years, two years on council before that, waiting for it to be easier. And recognizing my newness to the position, my newness to city finances, I keep wanting the answer not to be increases. It's how I've supported all of the votes that I've made. I've never voted no on a budget. There's been questions where, is this enough? But until I can actually point to a plan that indicates it's enough, I've been comfortable yet, for this year, yes, it's enough. And now that we've got parks into the 10-year plan and we know the staffing positions, if, if we find it to be important, we need to fund it because next year it's not going to be easier. And so I'm, that's where I'm at. That was a long answer.
I just, my only thought specific to the code enforcement is that we do have a new policy. I mean, so there were, to your point, there was calls for that position three years ago, but really there was no teeth, no avenue for them to do their job in the sense that it was still, correct if I'm wrong in language, but it was still basically a criminal path versus a civil path. Where now we have that policy in place, that my thought around possibly delaying the code position is, do we have the staff that, you know, to Blake's earlier point, let's identify the top 5, 10 properties. Let's test drive this policy, see if it's the right policy, that it's going to have the teeth that we expect it to. And assuming that it is, great, no adjustments need to be made, there need to be made. And we can, you know, ideally move forward with that position. I'm sure there'll be some feedback. Or, you know, if we find that it's not the right policy, we have that time to do it without having funded a position. That's my only thoughts around that.
Fair. Follow-up question, is there appetite to swap that position for park funding? Or that position for an increase to street funding?
Are you saying reduce street funding to fund that position?
No, 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 meaning we keep, we keep the number, the total number the same. We would not fund code enforcement, but we would increase the funding to either streets or parks.
So keep the levy the same?
Keep the levy the same. That's where I'm, that's just, and, and the reason I ask that question is that's where I'm at. There's, there's any number of holes. And if it's, tonight's not the night for code enforcement. I have agreed two years ago that it wasn't the night then, and I could, I could be convinced also that it's not the night, the amount tonight. But I just don't think we can, as a total, afford to go less than this year because we know, again, next year's not easier and the year after that's not easier. And here's why I think that's important. If we are going to say no to those things tonight, we also have to turn around and say, we're not either doing Fenway, we're not doing Belts, we're not doing, you know, like, there's some big implications that we start, if we're going to start saying no to things, we need to start saying no to things. And we haven't had an appetite to kind of reduce what's on our plate. And so I'm, I'm less concerned about, it's the overall number that I just feel like passionately that it, it's painful, but we need to take a painful strike.
So, so to that point, at this point, in my opinion, it's, it's not about a percentage right now because livid, getting rid of that position doesn't move the needle that much. The problem is that position is now on there and it's for next year, for next year, next year. I would be completely fine leaving the levy where it's at and add more to parks and roads. I have no problem with that at all. The example, or the, when I said that staff might have some additional bandwidth to handle this, so I had a conversation with a resident that was dealing with one of these properties, and he mentioned that the previous community development person was the person handling this with that, with his neighbor. and pushing to try to clean up. Unsuccessful. We have now since that position, since that turned over, we have a new community development person, and we've added two headcount. We've added a planner, and we've added an administrator, administrative assistant. So I think there is opportunities there. We can still clean up the city and not have that full-time position at this point. So to your point on the number, I'm... At this point, the 13-9, or it goes to 13-1 or whatever, unfortunately, it's not going to move the needle that much. So I...
If we get a complete consensus, I will agree with you.
I'm sorry, what was that?
If we get a complete consensus, I will agree with you.
Yeah. I can appreciate the consensus, and it's... I think we're representing different parts of the city. We know different people. So I think the consensus is good, but it's not something that... A huge focus on me. But I do like the idea of it, going back to the point. If we're going to spend more money for roads and parks, specifically maybe in this case, roads, we can work that out later. I'm fine with the 13-9. The next topic, though, I have some concerns with on the ten years.
On the ten years. Fair point. One thing at a time.
There's a motion on the second.
Well, so we have a motion, second discussion. Any other points of discussion? Well, so maybe... So I made the motion. Let me retract the motion, take it off the table. Discussion back on to... Can you pull up... Kevin, can you pull up the current... Just kind of the current outline of the motion that's on the table? And when I say outline, I'm looking for the visual by position.
The spreadsheet?
Yeah, or something that's going to... I'm looking for an illustration if we were to on-the-fly swap out the funding for the... I just want there to be clarity in what we're passing or proposing. They're going to propose first, pass second. And if we're proposing removing the code enforcement position, and if we're proposing moving that to streets, I just want there to be clarity in that motion that we're going to take. Is that possible to put up on the screen? While that's getting called up, because I think it's important we all have a visual, I will just say, one of the reasons that has made code enforcement so challenging is it is a very time-consuming endeavor. And I just want council to be aware that if this is the path we're going to take, I think we just need to have reasonable expectations around the bandwidth because we know there is an education component that is time-consuming. But then by law required, right, we are telling a property owner what they can and cannot do with their property. There are very strict requirements on the steps we need to take in that enforcement, as we should. And that is just time-consuming, and it's been one of the challenges and why we've designated the position. So if we're going to make this swap, which I think I could rally behind, just I think we need to be, you know, recognize that staff will do what they can, but it is not going to be to the level we would have otherwise.
I can appreciate that, but again, to my earlier point, you know, I think it gives us an opportunity to test drive the new policy, which we've never had. We've never... Our city staff has never had available to them to go after some of these properties that we all are aware of. And this ideally is going to give them that bandwidth. And is it perfect? Absolutely not. Will we, you know, probably need to be looking at this position next year? Probably. But I think hopefully it gives us that time and staff that experience to say, here's what works, or maybe there's some modifications that need to happen.
So with this, with on-screen, I think what's being proposed is to remove the funding for code enforcement, and which would take out of... Kevin, actually, rather than me talking through this, can you speak to what this change would look like?
Yes. Madam Mayor, so right now the code enforcement officer has a budget of $97,000. That is currently sitting in the general fund. So when on the screen where you see the $10.3 million, that would be reduced by $97,000 if you would take out that position. So therefore, if you would still want the levy to be maintained at that 13.91, that would give you $97,000 to reappropriate into a separate fund. We would need to know tonight where that goes when I submit the required documents to the state and the county. It's broken down by capital, debt service, general fund. So we do need to know where that funding would be going, just to make that clear.
So throughout the course of our discussions and negotiations as we've had it, we've reduced the capital improvement fund from the preliminary levy number of $950 down to $900,000. Is the thought that that funding would go purely to streets into the capital improvement fund? Is that...
That's kind of what I heard.
That's what I would...
Streets. My recommendation is also to streets only because that is not... That's the fund that took a more recent hit in our, kind of our compromise here. Also, our park fund needs help. Anything is helpful, but at this point, we need a broader discussion. And so I guess I think there's more consensus on streets, and so I can get behind that. I'm happy to hear from anyone else.
I would support that.
So... I'd support that, too. Just some comments about the code enforcement officer because I... And it's a compromise here, as I mentioned before. I prefer... I would love to see us have a code enforcement officer because we went through all the time and the money to get an ordinance that we liked. And it didn't just take us one round at a city council meeting or workshop. It took multiple rounds. And then knowing that we said in that meeting that we would do an ordinance, and then we would eventually do a policy, and that we had community members come to us wanting this. So this just didn't come out of thin air. This came from real concerns, real comments, questions, and a real goal in mind. And so it's, again, it's a compromise. And I think one thing to point out is that whether it's a fully funded position now or if it's a position that's already in the city, and then they're taking half their time or a quarter of their time to test out the policy and ordinance, it's still a person who has to be there to test out that ordinance, to see if it's something we like or if we need to amend it. It's still going to be a body. We're going to have to amend it regardless if we want to go in that direction. And then two, to point out, the number of bodies that we want to add. If you think about our previous planning employee, prior to that, it was three positions, and it went down to one. And that was prior to 2016. So then where we are now, it's back to a place where we were prior to 2016, but now we're in 2023. And so if you take that all into consideration, we aren't at a ridiculous headcount. But with that, I will compromise, and I'll be okay with it going to roads.
Councilmember Valente, you make a point that is just really important tonight. I think in getting this number, if we are going to get to this number, we've all gotten here by compromise, and we've all gotten here by not getting everything that we wanted. It is really important to me that if we are going to move forward with this, that we do so with consensus, and we do so together. That is, again, just really important to me, and something that I hope we hold ourselves to that standard of doing the work to get to the place where nobody's gotten really what they need, but that we're in a spot of we can nod and look each other in the eye and feel good about what we're doing, so.
Can I question... So on whatever the, you know, the motion is, with the storm enlargement position being out of... Basically coming out of different funds, are we making that decision tonight for that, to hire that position?
Might as well.
Well, but we don't really have to because it's not coming out of the levy. We're setting the levy. If these are coming out of... If they're coming out of storm...
Do it all at once.
But we do need to set a budget.
Madam, Councilmember Roberts, you are approving the 2024 budgets, which does include the surface water management fund and the sewer fund. So we would have to amend the resolution then for the tax levy and the budgets. I would have to go... I would have to get those numbers.
I'm...
It's better to do it now than to do it later.
Well...
Because you have to amend the budget at a different meeting.
If somebody wants to make a motion at some point to amend a budget later, that is a path. As it relates specifically to the stormwater fund, not funding that position and not continuing with that pond maintenance just continues to set us back. We have some of... One of the very first council member... Council meetings that I was at was the problem with our current stormwater pond situation, lack of maintenance. I mean, this has been a long time coming. It is funded entirely separately. Yes, I get it all comes out of, at some point, the same dollars, but that's a long road to get to that point, and I just don't want to see us move backwards. So I hope we can call a fair compromise to be on the one position.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a position that is needed. I mean, the stormwaters, number of ponds are continuing to increase. We've got to keep up with them.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to move that we approve an alternative resolution setting the 2024 tax levy and adopting the 2024 budgets as proposed, with the exception that we move the funding intended for the code enforcement out of the general fund into the capital improvement fund, as discussed tonight. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Patrick, could we do a roll call vote?
Yeah, first I'd like a discussion.
Discussion.
I think it's a mistake not to hire this position, not to put the position in for code enforcement. We've talked about that for three years. I think the council is continuing to kick that down the road, no matter what kind of other thing we can try to do. We talk in EDA about trying to do more EDA and economic development, but we don't have more staff to do that. So all you're doing is going to have three or four different staff members trying to hold this ordinance that you've passed up and enforce it. So I just think it's a mistake. That's all I need to say.
I appreciate your perspective. Appreciate it. Any other discussion? Patrick, could we do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Erickson.
Aye.
Councilmember Valente.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Next for our consideration is Resolution 12112302, approving the city of Forest Lake's 10-year capital financial plan. Let's open this one. Let's open this can of worms up for discussion. Who wants to go first?
One question for Kevin. In the 2025 proposed line item park improvement bonds, does that line item belong in there still if we're not issuing the bonds for Belts?
Councilmember Erickson, as our meeting on the fourth discuss, we left that in there as we weren't sure what the exact plan was for parks moving forward, and the funding that was going to be approved with that, once we got a parks commission sat. So that number did stay there as a projected plan. Whether that money is needed or not, as has been communicated, will be adjusted and looked at going forward. Again, this is a plan.
Yeah.
It's not set in stone where we could be coming next year, and it'd be higher or lower.
That's right. Thank you for that.
I appreciate, just a point of comment. I really appreciate us having a resolution tonight to acknowledge the 10-year plan. There are so many moving pieces to this plan and different appetites of pace, both on individual, specific projects, as well as the timing of those projects. It is intended to generate discussion, and it has done that, and that is exactly what's needed. It also is needed to generate prioritization and to give some forward-looking perspective on what's coming around the corner and how might we make all of these projects fit. I'm happy to support it tonight as a plan, but each... What is so important to know is each one of those decisions, both around total funding as well as each individual project, needs specific development. It needs a specific budget. It needs specific council and appropriate commission approval. It is by no means a done deal. I appreciate the concern that in three years, it is over 40%. But it is also intended to be over 40% in display to prompt the discussion of if that's not acceptable, what needs to come off the plate? Because the reality is, if something needs to come off the plate, we need to do that next year. These projects take a long time to get into the ground. If we're on the street side, we're probably four to five years out on street planning. On the park side, same level of timeline. We need to make those decisions in 2024. I think this council's committed to that. But so again, I'm happy to support the plan tonight in concept, knowing that all of the details within that plan has... We've got a lot of work to do. Happy to have another discussion.
And it's been explained to, I know, other folks. Mr. Leaf has also stated too, and made it, and it's correct, it's a road plan for the future, and it's going to take a lot of discussion. There's no way that... It's going to be hardcore or hard-cut in a stone. So at least, like you said, it's going to bring up the discussion, and I don't think there's been enough of that over the years. We're not... We haven't been looking ahead, and I'm really happy to support this because of that. At least brings up the discussion. Doesn't mean we have to follow it.
Exactly. Exactly.
I would, I guess, hesitant to support it, but I will. If anyone's property taxes, if the budget goes up 40 or 45 or 49% in the next three years, I'll be moving out of town myself. So we can't do that. It's just, it is, you can't sustain that. It's not even realistic, and unfortunately, we're going to have to figure out how to work out some of these things because it's unsustainable, so.
Well, I think the one thing, too, to keep in mind is that the one thing that the city can control is their spending. And so to become the city that's attracting to businesses and households, to someone's point, I mean, households aren't necessarily a net revenue gainer, but they are bringing in businesses. And so that's where we need to go, and we need to have a plan to get there, and I think this is it, in theory at least.
One other point is, two points maybe as it relates to the 10-year plan. I've heard a lot of pressure this year, and rightfully so, about the park commission that's not seated. With this information and with some information that we now have into the park plan, we're ready to seat a park commission and get that board back, back doing the good work that they do. Also, of not receiving a ton of discussion this year, but also important to have on the horizon, one of the reasons for the spikes in the mid-year of that 10-year plan is a public works facility. And we need to start actively talking about that and talking about the timing for that public works facility. It's going to be one of those things that I suspect, as council, we're going to nod and recognize that it's needed. The timing of what it takes to get that project done is significant, and it's going to take a lot of staff, you know, prep in advance. And we need to start getting the community aware that it is on the horizon, why it's needed, and then we need to ultimately decide where to slot it. But it's, again, it's one of the reasons for that core spike in that 10-year plan, and we just need to keep talking about it. All right, ready for a motion on the resolution unless there's any other points of discussion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution 12-11-23-02, approving the city of Forest Lake 10-year capital financial plan.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. With that, we've reached the end of our planned special meeting agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and we're adjourned. We do have a city council meeting that's scheduled to start immediately after this meeting. I would suggest let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll start the council meeting at 8:05.